I'll call to order the meeting of the Shawnee City Commissioners, May 21st, 2012. We call roll please.
Stevens. Sims.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier. Winringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Kevin Nagel from Life Song Church, followed by the flag salute. All who wish to, please rise.
Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, Lord, I thank you, Father, for this beautiful day that you have given us, and, Lord, we will rejoice and glorify your holy name today. And, Father, on this night tonight, Father, I thank you for the opportunity to still have a city that we can stand before chosen leaders and talk to you and ask your blessings upon each and every person in this place. And that's what I ask for, Lord, is a special blessing, a new blessing on this new day, to give these chosen leaders wisdom and to give them that continuous passion to lead a great city, a city that you have ordained and set in place in the state of Oklahoma. But, Lord, tonight, I pray that you give them peace that goes beyond all understanding tonight, to make the decisions, the right decisions, that you would want them to make, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Evan.
Okay, item number one, consider approval of agenda. Our motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Winringer. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Winringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, consider approval of consent agenda.
I'd like some more information on... To D, please.
Okay. How about a motion to approve the balance?
So moved.
All right, a motion to approve, item two, minus D, by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Any other comments? Okay, call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, two, D.
That is property that essentially was misdescribed. The starting attachment point got misdescribed some years ago when we needed easement, and we did work in easement that we apparently didn't quite have, instead of working in the one that we did have that we didn't need. It has been... There are actually buildings now on that easement. I don't know how many bank loans it's been through, entitled examiners, but somebody caught it, and we were asked to release it. We absolutely don't need it. It never did.
Do we buy it, or do they just get it?
We did not buy it. It was just given to us. Yeah, I suggested that, you know, $108 million would be a good price for it, but they didn't see it. But they didn't buy it. I tried, y'all. I did best I can.
Very good. Any other questions about it? Commissioner Sims?
And that is, I'm kind of lost on exactly where that is. Is that right adjacent? And the photograph that we have or the aerial is not?
It's... John may want to come in, but there's that little tunnel there. You know where the tunnel is? It was supposed to be over there by the tunnel. If you basically pick it up and flip it, it's where the work was done.
Where the what?
The work was actually done if you were to flip it.
So do we have an appropriate easement opposite this?
My understanding, it was for construction purposes, anyway.
John's second maker shaking his head.
John said it was okay. John told me it was okay. Mike Clover told me how it happened.
So, I mean, it should... I guess what I'm asking is, should that tunnel ever be four-lined? Do we need to continue? I mean, do we have the appropriate easement to do that?
Would we have the easement if we didn't give this up? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, more or less, yes.
If we have an easement there flipped, we have it. I guess, if we have easements still onto the west, it's still there. Where this is, you know, is in the areas, it's already four-lined, isn't it?
The tunnel is underneath the airport property. I mean, would you say the airport property, the four, the light and tunnel, it's all underneath the property?
So there wouldn't be additional easement needed there?
Got it. Good question.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, motion to approve two D by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item three, citizens' participation. Yes. If you'll come up to the podium, yes, and tell us your name for the record.
Evening. My name is Jack Smith. Live on 15203 Patterson in Oklahoma, in Shawnee. My subject, or my question tonight, is concerning a conditional use permit that the commission approved April the 19th, 2010, allowing temporary placement of a mobile home, and I have the adjoining land, it's to my immediate, I join that land. The mobile home was granted a conditional use permit temporarily while construction of a home. The ordinance was passed with certain conditions. One of those conditions was that the home needed to be started within six months, needed to be finished within two years, and then the mobile home would be removed 30 days after the house was complete. None of that has happened. As of the date, the progress on the building of the home consists of a stem wall with underfloor plumbing, but no slab, nothing. And I have a copy of a letter that Justin gave the owners, reminding them that they needed to be... They had a... They got a building permit, but it expired, and his letter was advising them that they could get another six months building permit extension. And with that, it should have been completed April the 19th, this year, 2012. Again, nothing has happened, and my concern is that this will just keep rolling forward. It will keep giving six months, six months, six months, and my concern is that my property value is damaged by this not-so-new mobile home out there in the ag area. There's... My home is on the north. There's a real nice home south of them and other homes. This is not a lake lot. It's not close to a lake lot, and I'm asking the commission to look into that and find out if there are reasons why the commission's warrant, if he was, was not followed.
Okay. We can't take any action on it right now, but since you brought it to our attention, we'll be following it, and we'll be able to get with staff. Do you have a question first?
What is... Your address is 15203?
203, yes. I'm immediately north.
Do you know what that address is?
15... The letter 15305.
Are they still living in the mobile home?
Yes. And you're in construction, I understand. I am also in construction, and I just don't see any... The work done to date has all been to support the mobile home, water, electric, septic, and all of that. The only work done whatsoever to actually start and complete a home is consist... In two years, consists of a stem wall with the underfloor plumbing in it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Item number four is Mayor's Proclamation, Emergency Medical Services Week, May 20th to the 26th, 2012. And Mr. Reed, are you going to accept it? Okay. City of Shawnee proclamation, "On behalf of the citizens of Shawnee, Oklahoma, I, Mayor Linda Peterson, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through May 26th, 2012, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Linda Peterson, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through May 26th, 2012, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, dated this 21st day of May, 2012." Certainly. Want to tell us about anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'll accept this on behalf of both React and us, and the men and women that work there, approximately 50 of us, and also on behalf of our medical community, our emergency medical responders, not only here in Shawnee, but in the communities that surround us. React will respond to approximately 10,000 calls this year, and we can only do that with the support of the cities in our service area and with the help of the other emergency responders, both law enforcement and fire department, and we surely do appreciate them. So, on behalf of all of them, I appreciate your recognition, and thank you for the resolution.
Thank you for everything that you do. Item number five, presentation of United Way of Potawatomi County Community Survey 2011 by Audrey Seelager and Mr. Affentranger.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing us to be with you this evening for a few minutes. I do have the wonderful pleasure of working with a lot of wonderful volunteers in our community, a lot of great young minds, and at this point in time, I'm going to introduce Michael Affentranger to you. He is a current board member. He is my past drive chair and currently past president of United Way of Potawatomi County.
Good evening, Commissioners. How are you this evening?
Great.
Thanks for your time. I promise that as I deliver this information that we have tonight, I'll be as clear and concise as I can, and at the same time, not take all night. I do know that the thunder tip at 8:30, and I know that's on everybody's mind, that I've heard walk in the building so far today. I think you have the information in front of you, and I believe that we're going to pull it up on PowerPoint as well, I think, if Mr. Nolan is helping us there in the back. I think probably everybody in this room knows what the United Way of Potawatomi County is, but I'm going to talk about it for one minute, just in case you don't. We are an agency that raises funds annually and distributes those dollars raised to more than, on an annual basis, 20 partner, local, and regional agencies. Those agencies would be very recognizable and named to each of you, most likely when you hear the YMCA, or Family Promise, or Project Safe, and we could go on and on, the Salvation Army. In the last year, we've had 22 that we have funded. It'll be 23 that have applied for funds this coming year, and our allocations committee will actually meet in June to decide on where funds will go for the upcoming year. Let me talk a little bit about how we got here. It was about 18 months ago, I think. Oh, very good, thank you. I'm going the wrong direction, too. About 18 months ago, the United Way Board voted to form a committee. That committee would be tasked with scanning the area, not only Shawnee, but a little bit of the surrounding area, to try to assess what are areas of need in this community. Specifically, we'll use this information in our allocations process every year. What areas might be overserved? What areas might be underserved? What areas aren't served at all? Those are kind of the tasks that this committee was given. One of the first things that this committee did was sit down and form a set of focus groups, five of them to be, in fact, totaling about 65 individuals across this community. Those included the United Way Board, which is a board of about 14, the Shawnee Youth Coalition, we talked to them to get kind of that high school, junior high representation, and also numerous other folks across the county, especially across Shawnee, from kind of all walks of life. And out of those focus groups, those five settings, we did not steer them in any one direction or another. We said, "What's on your mind? What's going on in this town? What's needs in this town?" And we let them talk, and we listened, and after those five focus groups, our committee, which you will see, hopefully, here, and I think you have the information in your packet, put together a survey from that. Who was this team? Well, it was myself, also Casey Bell from Bank First, Rachel Geiger, who at the time worked for the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation, and also Audrey Seelager, our United Way Executive Director. We put together about... It was 11 or 12-question survey? 12-question survey. We utilized Survey Monkey, which is just an online website, to put that together, and then we shot that 12-question survey out everywhere that we could think of putting it out. We emailed the link to large employer groups. It was advertised in the Shawnee News Star, the Countywide, and the Shawnee Outlook, and by word of mouth, and probably other ways that I'm not even sure. That's how we kind of got the word out. Once we got the responses back, and we gave it several months of time, we took the use of hired Dr. Denise Caudill. She was a third-party independent consultant to review the information, and the PowerPoint that I speak to you from tonight, and the information that you have in front of you, is one that she put together, okay? Let me talk a little bit about the response. We had 252 people log into this survey and respond to it. As you can see, 71% of them female. It's kind of high. We were hoping for a little bit more equal there, but that's what we got. 72% were residents of Shawnee, so of course, the other 28% from around surrounding communities or it's kind of the rural areas in this county. Unusually, 73% of our respondents held a college degree or higher. It was a little bit surprising to us that that came out that way. 73% also between the ages of 30 and 59, and then, very unusual, we thought, 75% with a household income of greater than $50,000, and we can probably point back to the level of education and kind of see that might make some sense to our respondents. And we put on here for your information just the 2010 census data from Potawatomi County, population of about 69,000, 52% female, 18% with a bachelor's degree or higher. So our survey respondents are certainly more educated than the typical person of the county. Then a median household income from the census 2009, about $38,000 bucks. We talk a little bit here about what we learned during the process, and then we'll jump into what the actual questions of the survey were and what we learned. Five focus groups were very well-attended. They were very energetic. They were very open to talk, and gave us, we thought, great, great information. You kind of look at the thumbs down there and see the survey response was less than what we hoped for. Especially for me, I was hoping a much larger number than 252 would respond, but we didn't get it. But the good news is that, once we sat down with Denise Caudill, who did review this information and again put this PowerPoint together, she said, "Don't worry about it. 252 is actually a very good sample for this area." She said, "And the results that you should receive with 252 respondents should be a pretty accurate representation of percentages on how people's feelings lie." So that made us feel a little bit better, at least our committee did, once we heard that information from her. Kind of moving forward, we hope to continue to do this. Of course, what future United Way Boards will do, I don't know, but we kind of hope to kind of take a scan or a survey of the town periodically, so we can have good information of what the donors of this county are wanting their allocations committee to do. So we'll kind of hope to maybe engage some more of those volunteers and some more of those donors moving forward. Enough of how we got here. Let's talk about what this survey said, and hopefully, some of this survey will be beneficial to you guys as you tackle the city's business. The very first question of the survey said, "Of these five categories, what is the most important?" And we had our respondents rank them in order one through five. And what you're looking at here is what people ranked number one. So 92 people said, "Successful children and youth" was their most important category of the five listed, 36%. A close second, 72 people said, "Strong and safe families." Basic and emergency needs came in at third, at 21%. And then you can see a pretty big drop-off after those first three. The last two, a healthy community, came in at just 8%, ranked that as the number-one category of the five. And then independent and active seniors came in at the lowest, at 6%. Talk a little bit about, under each question, the survey respondents were given an opportunity to just make some comments. I will not go through all of these for the sake of time, but you can just see here, the first comment was, "Children and youth need to be a number-one priority if we want community growth and progress. Investing in children is an investment in the future." That was under successful children and youth. As we look at the other categories here, you'll see similar comments. The first one here, under strong and safe families, "When we invest in our families, so they become strong, healthy, and secure, the effects domino down to all other concerns. When the basic family unit is encouraged, supported, and emphasized, the home can be an integral building block, laying the foundation for a healthy home, community, and school environment." Our third category, coming in at number three, and still receiving a pretty good percentage, let me go back, is basic and emergency needs. First comment there, "Meeting basic needs is foundational to all other human needs." And then the last two, healthy community. First respondent said, "I think it's important that our community or children participate in activities that promote health and well-being." And then from the fifth one down, independent and active seniors, and the person says, "Because I'm 62, and I don't think that there is enough attention to seniors." So those were kind of their responses to that. As you look at this next one, what we learned, you can see this by the percentages of those three categories that received votes, and also by the comments. We really believe, as a committee that put this survey together, those first three overlap a whole lot. Maybe not completely in all areas, but in very many areas, they do. You can look at some of these other notes, "Just addressing basic needs is fundamental for all people of all ages," and that's kind of what each one of those in those top three categories said. You can kind of see, we noted there, the response, our response was not linear, but instead encompassed all three areas, kind of like I've already said. Let's go on to the next question. The next question in our survey says, "What are the barriers and obstacles to success for our local children in this area?" And two out of three of our respondents said that lack of parental guidance and/or lack of a positive adult role model was the major problem that our local kids or our youth face in this area. So they really nailed these two categories. We bounce on to the next slide. They gave a handful of others, but keep in mind that it's the lack of parental guidance or the lack of a positive adult role model was 2/3. So these others here listed really received just a small percentage of the response, but they did identify addictive behaviors, drugs, or alcohol, or gambling, or things like that. They identified a lack of self-worth, a lack of education, or a lack of employment, as other factors that contribute or barriers and obstacles for the success of our local children. Some comments, we'll just read the first one here. "I work with youth and families on a daily basis, and it seems that the effects of parental guidance in homes, where there is little, lead to many of these other barriers. Parents are often overwhelmed or just not educated on how to guide their children, so other adults do it." We also asked our respondents why children and youth lack parental guidance and/or positive role models, and some of these are probably pretty self-evident, but the number-one reason that we found in the survey was an increase in the number of single-parent families. And you can kind of see some of the others there. Parents are too busy working to support the family or not at home with the children. Lack of parental engagement in children's lives because they're working or doing their own thing. Lack of parental skills, possibly, or parental abuse of addictive behaviors, or too much unsupervised time for children. Some of the things we learned about the barriers to success, people believe children deserve and need guidance and positive adult role models. So as we look at kind of the first section of our survey, the thing that stood out to our committee and to our board was that kind of the number-one thing on folks' minds was taking care of the kids. We've kind of heard continuously, "It may be kind of tough to change the adults, but if we can start with the kids, maybe we can, you know, make things better for the future." Kind of also have here, "All children need opportunities to grow, if not from their parents, from other positive adult influences." And let me just stop here and say, that's one of the things that our board has kind of picked up from this survey and said, "How... What can we do to address this just ourselves?" And we're just starting to try to get a mentoring program off the ground. One of our board members is Michael Shaw. He, along with Audrey and another handful of folks, are trying to get some kind of a mentoring program going. It's too early to tell you how that's going to look at this point, but some of the things we've talked about are, how can we engage senior citizens in that? How can we engage the workforce in times that they can come and mentor? And so that's some of the things that they're looking at, and so we'll see how that looks in the future. As we look towards the further results of our survey, kind of what we're getting to now might be, in my mind at least, of some interest to you guys. And let me talk about this community pride as we're looking at it here at first. This is not something that in our committee's initial talks came up, but what happened is when we had five focus groups talk, Audrey, stop me if I'm wrong, I would say three or four of those focus groups, someone piped up and identified it, not knowing that the other focus group had identified it, but someone in our focus group would say, "This community has a community pride issue." And then what we would see in that focus group is, almost everybody around the table says, "You know, you're right," or "Yeah, I've noticed that," and they would all chime in and agree. And it was, in the focus groups, something that just surprised us, of how they all felt that there was a community pride issue within Shawnee. And so, our committee not knowing exactly how our allocations committee might utilize this, because it was such a... this, because it was such a huge topic within our focus groups, we felt we needed to throw it into our survey and see what comes of it. And so, what we did is, we put a couple of factors, about four questions really pertaining to it. And the very first one said this, "Rate your level of community pride." And that, you'll see the graph kind of on the left-hand side. And so, our respondents said, and keep in mind, these are well-educated and for our county upper-income-earning folks, less than forty percent of them said they had high community pride. A whopping fifty percent of them put themselves in the "some" category, "Some" community pride. What exactly that means, we probably don't know specifically, but we can say it wasn't very high, we know that. And then, as you look further on down, nine percent of them said they would even say that they had low community pride. And three percent of them even said they would say none, they had no community pride The question immediately following that was to say, "Okay, we've talked about you. What is your view of others' community pride?" Because, really, we were talking about what other people were sensing as far as the level of community pride in our focus groups, so we kind of wanted to see, what is the heartbeat of our respondents? What do they think other people are thinking? And you can see, it gets a little worse. They said, four percent of them thought that there was very high community pride. A huge number there, sixty-eight percent said it was in the "some" category. There is some community pride, but it may not be low or it may not be high, it's just a "some" level. But then, as I look at that last one, or not necessarily the last one, that next one there, at twenty-four percent, sixty-one people, twenty-four percent, that's a quarter of our respondents thought that Shawnee had low community pride. And then, even another four percent said none. So, we found that rather interesting, again, as it came out of the focus groups and, as you can see, kind of what our respondents said. I don't know necessarily what else to say about it, other than that, we just found it quite interesting. We followed this up, we're saying, "Okay, there's got to be some factors that contribute to positive community pride, there's got to be some that contribute to negative community pride, what are they?" And we gave them as broad a list as we could give. Audrey, was there about probably twelve options on either side, would you say? Fourteen options on either side. And what you're looking at here were the top responses. So, we said, "What's positive, or what is a positive factor towards your community pride in Shawnee?" Number-one thing that they said, and it was kind of by a long shot, "It's just a small town or it's home," is what they said. They liked the small-town feel, or it feels like home, or maybe they grew up here. That was the number-one thing they said about Shawnee. I find it interesting, what's number-two. The proximity to Oklahoma City metro area was the number-two positive contributing factor to Shawnee, Oklahoma. So, that makes me wonder what the survey would look like if we were another thirty or forty-five miles east, I don't know. Moving on down, the number-three response, they said, "Was the civic or religious or volunteer organizations about our community?" Coming in fourth was affordable housing, and fifth was shopping and restaurants. So, the next question was, "Well, how about the negative factors? What do you not like about Shawnee?" Number-one was, they sensed a lack of an activity or healthy, conscious community. And those are our kind of parentheses there. Bike lanes, walking or running trails, or parks, or whatever else you want to read into, whatever goes into a lack of activity or healthy, conscious community. That was the number-one thing that our survey respondents pointed out as being the biggest contributor to a negative community pride. You could see the other three listed there that came in, third, fourth, and second, third, and fourth, homelessness, third, lack of beautification, and then, the last one there, That kind of is the end of the community pride questions, anyway. Just a couple more questions to go over, and then, we'll do our best to answer any questions for you and be done. It kept coming up in our focus groups that Shawnee needs public transportation or improved in what we have currently. And so, we asked the question, "Do you believe that public transportation is needed within our community?" And thirty-nine percent said it's very needed. Another near-half, half of the respondents said it's somewhat needed. Then, a handful said it's not a need or didn't have an opinion. So, we tried to follow that up with what else these folks are thinking in regards to public transportation. So, we kind of had four follow-up questions. Would you use public transportation? Only nine percent of them said they would, but I think we can go back and say, look at our respondents again, and expect that response, right? We said, "Would you and someone you know utilize public transportation?" Sixteen percent of them said, "Both they and someone that they know would." Then, we kind of get into what I thought was most interesting here, and that's that third one down. Fifty-two percent of them said they do know somebody who would utilize it if there was consistent, scheduled, some sort of mass transit, public transportation system within the community. And then, twenty-two percent, again, I think possibly responded, you know, reflective of our respondents, say that they wouldn't use it nor would they know anybody that would. So, that's some interesting information, we thought that you guys might find interesting Very last question in our survey was, "Are you aware of the 211 Resource Referral Hotline?" And apparently, not very many people are. That's thirty-eight percent of them said that they knew what it was. And so, let me tell you what that is. You can dial 211 from any phone in this area, including your cellphone. And what you will get is a referral hotline. And they will ask you where you're from or where you're calling from, you can give them your zip code. This is a call center in Oklahoma City that you will get, but they'll pull up by zip code. And if you tell them, "Here's the need that I have," they will help you identify agencies right here in our own community that can help you, whether it's legal assistance, maybe it's utility assistance, maybe it's food, or clothing, or shelter. Kind of a broad range there. That's a free call, 211 from any phone. And so, this kind of was just letting us know, as a United Way Board, how well-recognized is this in the community? Apparently, we have some more work to do with that, so. Try to sum it up. allocations committee meets next month. We absolutely have heard the people say kids are a main priority. We'll utilize that information as we look to distribute funds this coming year. We're working on that mentoring program that I talked to you about. Hopefully, some of the rest of this information is applicable to you guys, but try to answer any questions if you guys have them at this point.
I may have missed it, but when was this survey actually compiled?
I probably didn't say it, Commissioner Sims. During the fall of 2011, right, Audrey? Am I correct about that? Probably...
We wrapped up in the October.
Into October, roughly.
Yep. Too long ago, eight or nine months ago, yes.
Have you had any reason to believe that there might be a correlation between lack of transportation and lack of availability or access to services or agencies that are funded by the United Way? Can they get to where the help is?
It's a good question. I don't...
Probably there are times, no, that they cannot get to where the help is. Yes.
I think it's difficult to say if that's often or not, but I'd say for sure, there are times that they can't. I'd say that's definitely a case.
Do you hear that from the agencies that you support? Do you hear transportation from them, not just from the two-hundred-and-fifty-two respondents?
I'll look to you, Audrey. I think you probably communicate with the board more than I do.
Right. I think there probably have been instances where there's been a situation where partner agencies do have an issue with transportation, but usually, it comes from the client.
Okay. Okay.
When you say "client," you mean from an individual?
Yes, yes.
Individual leading assistance, yes. We do appreciate your time. Thanks for letting us share the results with you today.
And I would say, as you continue to either resurvey or evaluate, I would keep us informed on what you find out, because there are some things that we deal with up here, too. You're exactly right, this is all intertwined.
It is.
Yeah, not everything, but a lot of it.
Came back, yes.
Yep. Good work.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Find my spot on the agenda. We are at Agenda Item Number Six, Presentation of Capital Improvement Projects Funding Request for Shawnee Civic and Cultural Development Authority, otherwise known as the Expo Center.
Good afternoon. Over the last few years, three to four years, we've been fortunate enough to get additional funding for capital improvement projects and been very much appreciative. We've been able to remodel restrooms in both buildings, install fans, some fifty-amp, a little bit fifty-amp and everything, so definitely projects that's needed to be done. But, we're here, I'm here today to look at some funding again for some, one project and one project specific, which is a remodel of the comfort stations at the Expo. At one time, this was put on, actually, this was put on the agenda at the SN-CDA Board Meeting Thursday, and consensus of all the trust authority members was that this is the project that we look at doing. At one time, this project was in with the projects of the parking lot and the fifty-amp upgrade that are currently being done right now. The fifty-amp upgrade, matter of fact, is complete right now, and the parking lot is, has a deadline here pretty soon, and if it don't quit raining, we're going to be going down the rodeo, but that's okay. So, that's what we're looking at. When we first started looking at the projects, there's four comfort stations there. Three of them was built in nineteen-eighty-nine, and one of them, which is the closest one to the road, as you come in, was built in the middle-nineties, so it's not near as bad shape as the other ones are. Matter of fact, the one closest to the road has stainless steel countertops and nice bathroom petitions in it, so not near as probably fatal as the other ones are, but the other ones are in need of roof. The outside of it are, the cornish and the fascias is in bad shape and everything, and plus, inside still has the vermicatops and everything. So, we look at going in there to possibly put roofs on and do as much as we can, like I say. Initially, the cost of the projects was two-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, which I know that that's way off with a hundred thousand now, so. But, you know, we're looking at downsizing to see what we could do to get these projects done, especially the roof and the outside part, because the roofs are, the roofs are in really bad shape, lots of shingles missing on them and everything else, so. You know, basically, that's what my presentation is, I guess, of what we're looking to do. I mean, that's the only project that we're looking to do out there with the dollars, so.
So, how much, Cindy, or somebody, how much money's left out of what we set up in the bond in December? Did you run it offhand? It ended about a hundred and some thousand, Brian, do you remember?
I don't, James, I can get that number for you. I don't know off the top of my head.
So, you're talking about three-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand now for all of them?
No, for all of them is two-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-seventy-five for all four of them. That's for the architect that's already looked at them, already went through every bit of it, and we have all the, basically, all the plans to do everything that we initially was going to do on it.
And remind us, what did you spend a hundred thousand dollars on this current fiscal year?
On current fiscal year, we spent on the remodel of the Fred Humphrey Pavilion dining area, and we installed four more fans, twenty-four-foot fans. We did some exhaust fans in the Grand Stans concession, which had none, and whenever it rodeo, I mean, it was bad. And then, we added thirty fifty-amp plugs in there, which comes to a total of about ninety-five thousand, is what it accounted.
That's what I thought, it was very close to a hundred thousand, wasn't it? Okay. Okay.
So, does anybody use these comfort stations right now?
Comfort stations are used in every RV rally we have and ever, during the rodeo and everything.
So, people just aren't impressed by what they look like, or they leak outside?
Well, right now, they're not leaking, to be honest with you, but they, I mean, they was built in nineteen-eighty-nine, and they're in need of a lot of repair. I mean, when they was built, they was, they was built with just a concrete floor. They have no shower doors on any of them, that's the way they was built. The petitions, the stall petitions in them are zoned metal and a lot of doors missing off of them and everything, so.
Well, first I was out over the weekend, first thing I noticed was a roof and a cornish on them. They, that's why I was trying to, I'm sorry, I should have asked this before, Brian, so you would have known. Yeah, I'd like to, you know, see how much is left out of the bond money that we set up. I just had a figure in mind, it's about a hundred and thirty, but I'm not sure.
Check on that and get that figured.
Okay. So, if we could...
I believe...
I'm sorry.
Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted, is, what I always, have you talked to the county, or are they budgeting anything for...
I have not talked to the county about budgeting anything with it, no. I have not.
Well, they've done quite a bit then on them, didn't they put up money on the parking lot?
They've done about four-hundred thousand on the parking lot and with the fifty-amp upgrade, also some of it that we've done.
Might tell about the gravel?
Yeah, right now, they've also supplied us with all the gravel for down in the RV park to redo the pads and all the roads down there that they hauled all that in last week.
Has all the gravel piled up down there?
That's all come from the county, yes.
The board and the staff at the Expo have been very frugal with their money, and I think you have tried to do what you said you were going to do. I mean, every year, it's come up, it's a hundred thousand, and here's a list of things, and you do it and you come back. And so, I think, I think because you have honored your word, or, you know, been able to at least spread that money as far as it'll go, get it to match, get other entities to put some money in the pot, too. I mean, I do think that helps, and I think it helps when you come and ask for more money. I do have to say, and you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't state that if those gates don't get taken care of on the entryway...
They're missing.
Are they gone today?
They're gone.
Well, they're not gone yet, but they will be.
Okay.
I thought I was going to say...
Just to let you know, the gates will be gone whenever, they're doing the road right now from gate to gate.
Okay.
So, the gates will be pulled. I'm already talking to an individual about building an arch gate out there and everything, or archway and everything, so.
Take care of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought they were gone completely.
No. Yeah. It's beginning to look really, really good out there, and I know that, I'm sure everyone, now, all the other things don't look as good, and they're starting to look like they've had a little bit more wear and tear on them.
Right.
But, these comfort stations have been on your list, and they've been in the book that we've worked with to try to make the repairs that we wanted to make at the Expo, too. This isn't a new thing.
No.
Yeah.
Like I say, this was brought to the board last Thursday, and that was, that was everybody's, everybody was in agreement.
To stay on course with the comfort stations.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Item number seven, Consider Offer From Texoma Land Consultants To Lease Mineral Rights On Attractive Property The City Owns In The Shawnee Twin Lakes Area.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioner's Don Lynch, management director, also oil and gas inspector. This evening, before you and your packets, pages thirty-nine through forty-four, you have a copy of the offer from Texoma Land for the property that the city owns in and around the Twin Lakes area. I also put a folder at your position that has copies of that information, but I attached to the front of that some, a map book that's got a little bit better pages, and it's got the aerial photos, so as you kind of look at the sections that are involved, if you wanted to look at that from an aerial view and kind of see what was in that area, that's available to you as well this evening. Mr. Jim Roberts, the landman with Texoma Land Company, is here to visit with you about the offer and answer any questions that you may have. And I would just say that about a month ago, you had received an offer from Texoma that my understanding... Uh, that, uh, my understanding is that another landman was working, there are several landmen that are working, uh, in that area and they've consolidated that down now. And that's why Mister Roberts is here, um, to get the offer of all the, the property that they're looking at in and around the lake that the city owns. Now, they have agreed, if you, uh, choose to accept their offer this evening, that they would up, uh, include that previously, uh, agreed upon lease, they would, they would roll that into this property and it would up the price, uh, on that piece of property as well. But anyway, uh, I'll ask Mister Roberts to come up and, and he can give you some brief information and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
Mayor and Commissioner, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time this evening to, uh, visit with me. Uh, I'm, my name's Jim Roberts. I'm a agent that, uh, works for Texoma Land Consultants based out of Norman. And, uh, on about the sixteenth, uh, per the letter that you have a copy of, uh, we presented to the city, uh, our offer to lease, uh, the one thousand fourteen point nine-nine mineral acres, uh, that consists of six separate tracts or six separate sections. There's multiple tracts in, in each section. And, uh, you have a, a list of those, uh, on page two of your letter. Uh, they're broken out, uh, by, uh, section and the city's mineral interest in the gross acres, which equates to your net mineral acres, which is what we're here, here to lease. I do have a copy of a map here that, uh, was not in your packet. Be happy to hand that out to you guys if you'd like. It shows, uh, a little more in detail, but the, basically, the acres, uh, surround the, the lake area that we're looking to lease. So, what we're here tonight to do is to get approval for our offer, uh, answer any questions that you might have. And then, uh, subject to the, the commission's favorable approval, uh, we would then come back with the actual leases and present those to the city. I think there was a question prior to, uh, the meeting, uh, going into session tonight as to exactly how the lessor, uh, for the city would need to be titled. So, that's something that we would have to clear up. Uh, is it the City of Shawnee or municipal corporation or what it is? So that we'll know how to properly address the lessor. And then also, uh, so in the signature block, uh, on page two of the sample lease, uh, we can make sure that we have the, the correct, uh, signing authority, uh, listed there. Uh, and then, of course, there's a notary section for that. So, you do also have a copy of, uh, of what I'm gonna refer to as the Form of Lease, uh, that we'd be using for the city. It's a standard oil and gas lease, uh, that you see pretty much everywhere. I know most everyone around here is familiar with minerals and oil and gas and leasing. It's not like we're in a county that you don't see that happening. Uh, so this is a, is actually kind of a wild play area that, uh, hasn't been leased in a, a number of years. And, uh, our client is looking to lease that and Texoma is the land representative, uh, looking to do that. So, we're, uh, asking tonight for the, the commission to approve our offer, uh, of two hundred dollars an acre for a three-year paid-up lease and a three-sixteenths royalty, uh, that's outlined in our letter of May sixteen.
What determines the difference between them? Just from my information, a hundred and fifty dollars an acre and two hundred dollars an acre. It's the size of it, size of the lease?
It, it, it's, it's market-driven, the, the, the bonus is, uh, uh, you know, we looked at this and kind of felt like that, uh, you know, we're interested in, uh, with the eight mineral acres being spread out in six different sections, uh, that's a little more favorable uh, to what our client's looking for. Uh, and when we originally started out, uh, there was an error that was, uh, made in the legal descriptions when we were compiling those acres. So, when we came back and corrected that, I don't know if you, anybody's looked at the legal descriptions for that area out there, but it's, uh, you know, meets and bounds most of it and, you know, some of them are almost two pages long. Uh, so when, uh, there was, uh, actually a tract that was, uh, overdone in terms of acres and then there was another one that was under. And I think when you came out, uh, it went to a thousand fourteen point nine-nine acres, which is what the city owns. It was never a situation, it's originally, uh, there was some, uh, mineral acres in there that the city, uh, didn't actually own. Uh, so all those things being considered, uh, and kind of what the going rate is, we were authorized to present the city with two hundred dollars an acre for, like I said, a three-year paid-up lease and a three-sixteenths royalty in the event of production.
Let's say, so, leases in Seminole County, that's what, I've been leasing for, it's two hundred, that's why I'm...
Yes, sir. Any other questions that I can answer?
I notice two or three of these sections are right up against the, uh, taking part of the lake and everything that's, uh, advised it. The, uh, boring drilling actually takes place, that, uh, that would be required to get a drilling permit and things like that, make certain requirements, so we're not sacrificing any part of the lake or...
I just have been saying, you're correct, Commissioner, anything that, any drilling that takes place in the city, the, the, the oil company would have to come back to this commission with, uh, a request for a permit to do that. Drilling would specify the, the safeguards that they put in place. Anything that you want to know at that time, they could be willing to talk to you about the, the specific processes would be used. So, you would get to see that again before drilling took place.
And we would be presenting the, the leases, once we get the lessor, uh, part of it straight down, we'd be presenting those to the city. Uh, then those would be signed and, um, like we, we just mentioned, there's permitting and, of course, the, you know, the Corporation Commission, uh, you know, very heavily regulates, uh, the oil and gas industry in turn, especially nowadays, uh, in terms of, of, uh, their proper procedures and techniques, uh, in drilling. Of course, the horizontal drilling is, uh, you know, the big thing now. The new technologies and things that have come across, have come forth, uh, allow units, uh, where the wells spudded, uh, in to actually be, you know, considerable distance from, uh, where the actual, they're actually drilling into a subformation. So, if, if anybody has any specific questions about the technical side, I'll be happy to get those answers for you. I, I'm a, a landman lease buyer, uh, more than I am the technical drilling side of it. So, uh, my job is to get the acres leased and that's what we're asking the city to, uh, approve tonight, is our letter.
Is that... Is that motion in order or is it...
We need a motion to accept the offer and authorize the appropriate officials to sign.
So, move.
Yep, a, a motion by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Sims. Did you get the motion, Phyllis?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Carries.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, very much.
Item Number Eight, Acknowledged Sales Tax Report Received May twenty-twelve.
Well, this month we got some good news. It was up again. Um, for the May sales tax, we received, um, one million four hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, um, which was up a hundred and fifteen thousand or eight point six percent from last year. And we were up ten percent by May of two thousand and ten. So, we've had a couple, couple of good months. Three months ago was flat. So, hopefully, this is saying that we are on the upturn.
It still puts us two point seven percent above...
Budget.
Budget.
You know, I'm still just sitting there looking, over the last quarter, we, you know, in February, we had twelve percent increase and then, and then the next month, you just had, uh, three hundredths of a percent increase. So, I'm still questioning, well, that's...
Well, February was a lot, um, I think it has a lot to do, one of the big boxes are, on average, and now that they're starting to have, be in town for a while, there's coals, it, it's gonna catch up. Um, the twelve percent too, so February is, is some, also the big boxes for the holiday season.
Did I understand that Oklahoma City was requesting permission or had received permission to, why, try to collect the delinquent taxes?
Commissioner, many cities in the state have, um, started to assign staff with some duties in terms of finding or delicting sales taxpayers. Oklahoma City recently was, was tying it to, to business licenses and also doing that. So, yes, sir, I think the answer to your question is yes.
Do we know if we have some delinquent taxpayer not asking for their name or anything, but that's one of the...
Yes, we do.
Huh?
Yes, we do.
We do and...
To answer that, yes.
That was asked.
I think, I think to answer your question a little bit further, and there, but I think there are those that we don't know about.
Right.
Because there are three kinds of, of taxpayer. The ones that do what they're supposed to do, the ones that don't do what they're supposed to do. And then, in our case, with sales tax, the ones that don't pay all they're supposed to pay. And I think in, in our state, from what we've gathered, is that, that the ones that are kind of in the middle there are the ones that, that kind of don't get, um, checked on, so to speak.
And there's some that are very hard to track, um, because they have a corporate name, but they're doing business as, so it doesn't tie to what they're reporting. I mean, so it's hard to...
It's hard to tie the receipts that you receive or the information that you receive.
Or walk down the street and say, "Company A B C, let me see if they're paying their sales tax." Well, they may be X, Y, and Z by the corporate name.
On the list, right.
So, is that, I mean, we've talked about the business license, is that still...
Yes, sir, we're still looking at that. Um, there are some good models out there for us. So, yes, sir, we are still looking at it.
Well, that would be, once a day, get their business license and you could check to make sure they have a, are actually doing sales.
And we would know how they were doing business as.
Right.
Well, when we got a business license, it also would require them to give us a copy of their Oklahoma tax license, so.
So, what's the process to get that moving forward a little more aggressively, the business licensing?
We just need to find the staff time to do it.
Okay, I understand.
Under what department would that be? Just out of curiosity, thinking about what you presented on the budget, um, for personnel.
I think it would probably be a combination of, of finance, uh, finance in terms of, you know, the staff and probably, uh, the planning department and co-compliance in terms of...
Okay.
Of actually the permitting of the actual business and having a place to go to, to do that with. So, we've talked about it, we just need to have more discussions about it.
Is that something that, um, an additional, um, person, I mean, let me rephrase that. In your budget preparations that we've received, and I guess we start looking at this week, is that one of the extra duties that you are looking at as this budget and personnel, um, were put together at all or not?
Uh, we have not actually considered that for this budget. We obviously have lots of needs for each of our departments. We are seeing that, you know, our sales tax receipts that, that are coming up, that one is one that we really like to look at. We really want to try and look at a purchasing person to help streamline purchasing and, and bidding out and, and those types of things, everything from paperclip sign up to whatever we do in terms of large capital purchases. A grant writer, something that we really think that we need to do. Several of these positions though, I mean, I, I, some of the other cities that we've seen have seen probably a, at least a twenty percent increase in their sales tax collections, which would mean that those positions could easily pay for themselves if they were out there doing that work on behalf of the city. But you've gotta, you've gotta have the money in advance to hire those staff and get them out there, do that work, so.
Well, uh, in Oklahoma City, for example, that's predicted to be millions of dollars that mean delinquent taxes that weren't, that were being collected but not being given to the city. So, that's why I was asking if we could find out, I don't care to know their names, but they may not like to have an idea how much the delinquent taxes are out there.
I might add that, that it's only been recently that, that our contracts with the Oklahoma Tax Commission really allowed us to do this on, on our, on, on their behalf, so.
Just this session?
Uh, it was last, it was last year sometime when that actually came out.
It was last year they authorized it. It's been a lot of this year getting it, that they have the same problem. They don't have enough people in place. And when we get to the enforcement part, it requires some work on their part because the way the enforcement works is, we would write them a letter with the, the taxpayer, the business. We would write a letter and say, "It has come to our attention that you're delinquent and you need to pay the tax commission and give us a copy in order to avoid dealing directly with us." So, we have, we have to have, and, and they, I think they have only two people available to do that throughout the state. So, uh, from my side, um, I mean, I'm, we, we have the ordinances in place that we need to do it. And I can put the process in place and now that I have an assistant, I have somebody, an administrative assistant, I have somebody who can do that. And we can, can go ahead and start on the ones that we know about. But the list that we know about is, is not the big list. The, uh, that's, I mean, there's some money out there and there's some to be had, but it's not huge amounts. It's the stuff that's getting completely by all of us, that, them and us, the, the state and us, though. It's where the real money is.
And when you get in the collection business, it's not all whistles and prizes. How do we enforce? Do we have shutdown procedures or...
No, actually, it's a violation of the code and it involves your appearance in municipal court before the judge to explain why it is you've committed the crime of failure to report and failure to pay. So, we don't do collections, we do prosecutions.
Okay, so we prosecute them?
That's what I understood.
We don't do collections, we do prosecutions. We say, gee, you might want to get caught up because this is a problem and give them some amount of time to do that. And if not, then we just begin a prosecution like we would for any other violation of the city ordinance.
And then, and then following, I may be a little slow here, but following that, let's say this guy just doesn't, he's prosecuted, how do we get the money out of it, turn it?
Well, there will be that, there's always that problem. I mean, eventually though, I mean, somebody gets in compliance or they end up taking bankruptcy and then trying to deal with their, their taxes. But it's, a lot of it, this, this, the mid-sized cities, and there aren't very many of them, but the ones that have started doing this have found out that, among other things, folks don't want their name in the paper about it because it tends to, to make people feel like their business is perhaps not viable and their bank might notice and, and so it's worth it to try to get the money together. And, and if, if you get assistance in place, you don't wait till people are so far behind that, that it's gonna happen. So that you, you kind of get that part of it going and, um, Muskogee has been doing this and they've not had to prosecute very many people.
You think they put people's names in the paper, is that...
It, it becomes public record and someone can ask, if the newspaper asks, that it would be released.
But it's primarily voluntary compliance.
Once, it's voluntary, once they get a letter.
Right.
They, like I said, they don't really have to prosecute very much. So.
How far can you go with that on taxes?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head what the statute of limitations is on... I try to pay mine on time so that I don't have to know. I don't, I don't know what the statute of limitations is in sales tax collections, right? I mean, there's, there's some, there's some out there. But the last time I looked at the list, it wasn't really that significant in a lot of the ones we had, just from looking at the list. It's folks that are already out of business or...
So, the, are, the list that you're speaking of is actually from the tax commission that is...
Yes.
Failure to pay, basically, to the state.
So, it's, it's that...
And further remit to us, okay.
It's that stuff we don't know to ask about. That's, that's where the money is for, for all the cities.
I mean, as an example, state legislature did address something called Zap software during this legislative session. What that software was developed to do was, you go into a restaurant, you pay cash for your meal. It was twenty dollars. You owe a dollar seventy in sales taxes and it wipes out the sales tax and shows it as a thirteen-dollar sale. And you only pay sales taxes on that, but yet the merchant is still collecting the other forty-five cents or whatever it is. It's some pretty, it's some pretty devious software, but it was alive and well. The, the legislator needed, needed to try to address it, but they can't get in a, there, there are some, some eighty thousand businesses in the state of Oklahoma and probably only about forty or so state agents that are actually out there looking after it, see that they're paying their taxes. So, a lot of the cities have taken upon themselves to hire staff to go out there and make sure, check behind. And a way to do that with business licenses also too is, you guys don't have to reissue the business licenses if for some reason they're, they're, um, not paying their taxes like they're... they're supposed to.
I don't think I realized that we were talking about an additional staff person to, to get this business license up and running at the time we talked about it earlier, but you believe it would take an additional staff person to implement that?
Not necessarily to actually issue the business license, I think we could probably handle that, but I think that actually going out and having somebody dedicated to actually making sure that the businesses are doing like they're supposed to do, and taking that business license information with them to the merchant is something that will require additional staff.
And I think what I heard Commissioner Harris say, and I would agree with him, that we need to move post haste on getting this licensing ordinance in place, and then follow up with staff as needed after that point, but the licensing part itself seems to be pretty simple, or relatively simple.
The preparation of the ordinances and having that enacted, that's pretty simple. But, you know, you're really talking about getting a list of businesses that are in town, and then somebody going door to door, every ad in the newspaper, every ad on Craigslist, every, I mean, every venue you can find where somebody advertises, and if that business isn't on the list, make it an inquiry and getting them.
Surely the tax commission could give you, I mean, to give you a good start with touching those people who are collecting tax, and then there's obviously some footwork we're gonna have to do, but it seems like we've gotta start somewhere, and I would agree with Commissioner Harris, this is a great place to start, let's move forward.
Most people that are off the grid with us are off the grid with them, too. I mean, it's a statewide problem, it's a statewide problem.
Enough about sales tax reports. Okay, item number nine, do we have bids? Not in, here we have it in SMA, knowing, okay. Item number ten, new business?
Madam Mayor, no, no, no new business this evening.
Item eleven, administrative reports.
We have two this evening. James is gonna come talk to us about our library roof situation.
I actually have a couple of more which are short, but we're gonna start with the short-term loan and the projects that I had on that, as you can see on the, on the agenda. And what y'all approved tonight was to go out for bid for the library roof, and that will begin tomorrow. The other one was the walking track, and we kind of held off on that till we got the library roof underway. We kind of wanted to engineer that in-house. Engineering has been kind of busy here lately, and between that and wanting to hold off, but we have come to an agreement there, and we're gonna get started on engineering that project, and hopefully, right in there, close to fall, we ought to be able to go out for bid on that project also. Any questions on that?
Is that gonna involve moving that fence in some areas where the curb and the track and the fence are right next to each other?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to kind of take a look at some of that. I'm afraid that portions, portions of it may not be able to go to ten foot, but as much as the heavily used part of the track that we have, will go to ten foot. There's just some areas in there, like along where Gordon Cooper's at and Air Flight and stuff, we may have to continue with eight foot on that one.
Behind the T-hangers and right there, like across from the elementary school?
Yeah, Rex and I have had some discussion on that, too, with where that fence has fallen down, that there may have to be some added retaining wall or fence work down there also.
Right, okay, okay. I think that's prudent.
I passed that the afternoon late, and I'll bet you there was thirty-five or forty cars, and they weren't along airport road, but they were all everywhere else, so I think most of the traffic goes around with the expo in the other direction, try to stay clear of that expo, I mean, airport roads here.
Yeah.
But there was a bunch going the other direction. And I, once that point, Mike, James, when we set that up, I didn't want to go to the expense of hiring an outside engineer, so, you know, I understand the kick boot project still comes first, so I just want to kind of find out where we're on it.
The other thing is Memorial Day's coming up, and the ceremony at the BFW does at Fairview Cemetery will be at eleven AM Monday. And then, the last thing is, latter part of last week, I did receive confirmation that we will be getting a ten thousand dollar grant from the healthy communities, and I kind of tied that in with the walking track and told them that it hadn't yet been engineered, but as soon as we get some ideas on that, we'll come back and explain to them how we're gonna use their money on that project. There also, and I gave y'all a letter that they sent me, and it appears that they're gonna want to have a big presentation, so.
For ten thousand dollars, we'll show up.
Did you receive any kind of estimate on the roof, are we gonna be within budget or anything?
Well, yeah. We did, the engineer, architect did go out and done some preliminary looking at different types of roof and cost estimates on them, and then we came back in and looked at those costs and what types of roof there was and decided in that direction. And it does appear we're gonna be under budget, and because of that, we did add a couple of other things in, like new skylights, since they've been in there for quite a while, and a ladder going on to the roof from inside the building, because we have just an old fold-up ladder to get up in there, so, but yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, one additional this evening, Phyllis is gonna talk to us about what we're doing for some additional customer service opportunities for our customers.
I think I probably came to you once before and explained that we are putting kiosk into the Homeland stores where they have the payment kiosk already there for lots of different things besides utilities. I was surprised at how much you could actually pay at a kiosk when I looked the other day, but July one is our startup date. They will accept checks, cash, Visa, MasterCard, and Discover Card. They're available as long as the Homeland stores are open, which is, I think, from seven AM to maybe eleven, maybe midnight, I'm not sure what the time is. We will advertise on Channel Thirty and in our water bills. I've gotten permission to put signs or banners outside the stores for a while to let people know.
Is there a fee involved with that?
There is a fee, it depends on your payment type. If you're paying cash, this is kind, because there's no fee to us at the moment, US Payments gets their fee, their cost out of fees. If you're making a cash payment, it's a dollar fifty. If it's a credit card payment, it's three fifty. Part of that goes to US Payments and part of it goes to the credit card company.
They take checks, too, don't they?
Yes.
So, there is a convenience fee?
There is a convenience fee.
Okay.
To the user?
Right.
Right. So, at this point, you know, depending on usage, if we find out that, you know, we're getting a lot of customers here, we might want to reexamine the fees and see if it's still, you know, we want to leave them the same, or we might want to maybe lower them or something down the road.
But that covers our costs?
Yeah.
Servicer's cost.
Do you know, like, the next day, if it shows that that has been paid, so?
Yes.
Separate cutoffs and things?
Yeah, we'll be covered on that. There's, I think there's like an hour between seven AM, we'll get our final report, and then, of course, we don't open until eight, and on a cutoff day, our supervisor will call or will be able to access what's been deposited or paid during that one particular hour, and those people will be exempted from cutoff that day. So, we have it covered. I think they'll post every morning at seven AM what's been done the previous day. We also have the ability to go online and see it ourselves, too.
Send the pay charges to them, yes?
Most people do-
I know he's gonna announce about the new water meters.
Oh, no, we'll go a long way from there. Anytime you're ready, Commissioner.
Madam Mayor, that's it for administrative reports this evening.
Item number twelve, commissioners' comments.
I need to apologize to John Crywiki and perhaps Justin for marking them on the landscaping at the expo at our last meeting. I clearly confused two meetings and understood we'd have landscaping, but the last meeting that we discussed it, I was wrong, so I apologize for being cranky about that. I noticed in the newspaper that the county trust was talking about having an election on their nine-one-one fee. I'd like to have a staff report at the next meeting to talk to us about that opportunity in Shawnee on the landlines.
We can do that. I'll just tell you that that was on the Board of County Commissioners' agenda this afternoon. The Board of County Commissioners chose not to take any action on that right now, they're gonna study that a little farther, and what that is, is to raise the fee from the current ten percent to fifteen percent. That would require a load of the people.
Right, on landlines, but simultaneously, I'd like to have a report from staff from the city perspective, also what general fund dollars we're putting into nine-one-one, which I think I know the answer to, but to look at the big picture of the nine-one-one opportunity, it just seems like this is, smart people can resolve this problem. Wage study, salary study, will that be a part of our discussion tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have all the information there. I had the opportunity to participate in the orientation of the Centennial class a couple of weeks ago, and, which was quite interesting. But then, secondly, for a couple of hours that Thursday, I rode with Chief France, which was a real privilege and honor to be able to do that, but in, and we basically were together for about two hours. In that time, there were three folks arrested with warrants. I lost count of the number of traffic stops, I think there were about nine officers on duty, but the number of stops and citations that were going across the radio, probably the most significant part of that ride, which the chief said's not the norm, but we were by the high school, and one of our officers ended up being in pursuit down Highway Three, chasing a car that was all over the road. Anyway, we left high school and headed out Highway Three, basically, to North Rock Creek Road or thereabouts, and I've never driven through our community at that speed with lights and sirens and all the good stuff going on, which was a pretty big adrenaline rush. But as we arrived at the place where the guy had jumped out of his car and took off running, I had the opportunity to see our K-9 folks deploy a couple of dogs and literally round this dude up, find his various artifacts, like his shoe stuck in the mud and a number of other things. But they caught him, but the thing that really interested me the most, and I don't think I could name them all, but clearly we had a number of our police officers out there, Seminole County, Maude, the Oklahoma, the Highway Patrol, our Pot County Sheriff, and I think there were some Tecumseh officers, and there may have been others. I've never seen so many police cars in a woman area. But the point of that is, I think it's very critical that is a part of this budget, having seen what went on in that two-hour period in our little quiet community. I think it's critical that is a part of our budget that we address and fund communications for those officers. It's not only their safety, but it's the public safety, and it's a critical need.
I commend you, Frank, for doing that, but one correction, this is not a quiet community.
Now, with what went on in that two-hour period, it certainly is not.
And I second what you're saying.
Earlier this year, we had a need to dig up independence between Center and Harrison, maybe we were gonna delay that until school was out. Has that been rescheduled now that the summer is beginning?
Madam Mayor, the city engineer may be able to address that better. We, there's all this rush and it had to be done by the contractor and all that, and they weren't even ready with somebody to come out and do the work, so we've kind of let it go so that we do do it during the summer after school is let out and not inconvenience. I know John's had some conversations with them, but I don't have the exact update.
Actually, we've received the plans on their proposed project about four weeks ago from OEI, and we've been reviewing those. There's some issues with the water line replacement. We got a meeting this Friday at nine o'clock with the engineer, the drips plans, and they also have to present an agreement to us. If you recall, we had an agreement with them that they were gonna do it within like thirty days. Of course, they never did execute the agreement, we did, so on this instance, they're gonna have to execute the agreement before we bring it to the city commission for, you know, your all's ratification, but we do have a meeting this Friday to go over the plans.
Okay, okay, thank you. And one other thing, I had a discussion with a downtown business owner on Saturday who had some questions about the bar that changed hands, and her concern was that the city did not follow the proper paperwork for that entity to go to someone else, that there were some, there was some paperwork that needed to take place, or some permitting or something like that. Do you know, do you know any details about that?
I know a little bit about it, I think it would be best to ask the planning director to come up and address the commission regarding it. Here in Shawnee, we actually, I don't know if this answers your question, you can certainly address Justin for more details, but city commission approves a conditional use permit on the property when somebody has requests an alcohol license. From there, they need to get their actual license through the Oklahoma State Able Commission, and from there, it goes through a process. We do get some input in on it, but they actually are the ones that actually hold those permits for the city of Shawnee, so.
So, the city doesn't have any, once we approve the permit, we don't have anything else to do with that business?
Other than, you know, we regulate, you know, domestics out there and that type of thing, and we regulate whether alcohol can be on the street or sidewalk or not and those types of things here locally, but.
But is the business licensed or the individual?
It is the property, well, the individual's license holds a license with the state Able Commission.
But not with the city?
Not with the city.
Right.
It's not a conditional use to the individual, it's to the property.
You have two things, you have the zoning, the use of the property, that stays with the property, that can be transferred.
Right.
Then you have the various liquor, beer, whatever licenses. Those, a new entity, every, changes hands, the new entity has to go apply and get a new license to dispense the alcoholic beverages.
But if the business is acquired, in other words, if Joe's bar is bought by somebody and it's still-
By Sam, it can still be a bar. It can still be a bar because it's-
But if the liquor or the alcohol permits are held by the corporation, is, I thought was the case that we were talking about?
If Joe, if Joe owns the alcohol permits and sells his bar to Sam, Sam has to go get new alcohol permits, but he doesn't have to come get a new conditional use permit for the zoning to have a bar in a particular place.
And the alcohol permit's not permitted through the city?
No.
Okay, they, right, exactly.
But we have a, what's our license fee for that permit?
We have, for which permit? For the conditional use permit?
For, yeah.
We also have, we have a beer license, I mean, we have some little, we have some licenses.
Isn't our liquor license the same cost as Abel's, nine hundred dollars?
Should be, generally, I don't know, I haven't looked, but it's not anymore.
What's not anymore?
It's not any higher, I'm sorry, it's not any higher than that.
So, basically, once the property is permitted or is zoned for that type of a business, then it can change hands, anybody else can buy it, and it's still zoned? then it can change hands, anybody else can buy it, and it's still zoned for that?
Unless you had some restriction in the original zoning.
Okay.
I mean, generally, what you end up with, I mean, you might, the guy, Joe may or may not have owned the property. He may have leased the property from Bob, so Bob actually came and got the use permit, then leased his bar to Joe, who then ran it for a while and sold the business to Sam. I mean, it's.
I'm aware of some situations where there's a liquor license issued to a corporation, and the corporation itself is actually sold to other people.
Yes, and that happens, too.
And so that's where you, that's kind of the loophole.
Yeah, that's right. Then it goes with it.
So are you familiar, Justin, with what this issue is here?
I am, yes, sir.
Can you spell that out?
Well, I just, in this particular, and the only other thing that I would add to the conditional use permit process is that it, you know, on the application itself that an applicant submits, it asks for a description of what's proposed. And so if somebody, if we licensed Joe's bar and Joe sells it, and the new owner wants to triple the size or do a use that's significantly different, maybe they have, just to have a beer permit, and they want to serve hard liquor, then those kinds of changes could trigger a new review if it's substantially different from what was approved. But in this particular case, on that particular property, the commission in 2006 approved a conditional use permit for both beer and alcohol for on-premise consumption, and that has not changed on that particular property. The relative size of where and how it's served has not changed. We did do an, the building department did do an inspection on the property, made sure that all the appropriate life safety measures were in place. The fire marshal's office did an inspection, make sure the sprinkler system was operational and up to code. And so we do have, we do have checks and balances in place for operations as well, and those are, tend to be triggered when there is a sale, or we know that there's a new permit, or a transfer permit for the alcohol license, because we get notified by the Naval Commission of that as well, so.
Okay. So everything that needs to.
So did we miss a step, I guess, with what the mayor said? Did we, did we miss a step in this operation?
No, sir. It's my opinion that we did not miss a step in this operation.
Yeah, that's what I needed to know, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'd like to comment on this United Way thing. I don't want to breeze through this lightly. This is very serious, and this is the heart of our problem in this town. And I, for one, will do everything in my power to correct a lot of the lack of pride that we, I completely believe there is. And Frank and I were in high school, I won't embarrass you, Frank, years ago, I think we had a lot more community pride than we do now. And these various factors that they went into and asked the respondents to respond to are right at the heart of the matter. Drugs and alcohol, incarceration, lack of pride, that's really hurting this city. And I would really like to encourage the rest of you and myself, I'm not preaching it, I'm praying with you, let's do everything we possibly can. This city had a lot more pride years ago than it does right now. It's a torn-up city, these are some of the factors for it, and I'm very concerned about it. And I think we ought to very much take this report and thank them for putting it together and take a hard look at what we can do as citizens and as government officials, police department, fire department, everybody in this room and far reaching. This is, this is very serious, extremely serious. And lives can be in danger about it, families can be in danger about it. It goes to the heart of what a community is supposed to do, and I just want us to take this very, very serious.
Yep, I wrote "community pride equal to success for children," so I think, I think there's definite correlation there.
I contacted the city manager, what Brian, about two weeks ago, about maybe trying to hire some extra help for the summer, like college boys or seniors out of high school or juniors in high school to work and help James keep up the parks and even put a couple of them out at the expo to, you know, mow the grass and water shrubs and things like that for the summer. So, I don't know, maybe a little bit late, most of the schools are about out, college is out, St. Griggs, I think, is out, and all the U's out. We need to kind of think about that for the future. That's, a lot of kids, most basically, 18, 19, 20-year-olds, it's pretty hard for them to find a part-time summer job, and we could hire them at almost minimum wage and get a lot of work out of them. So I'd suggest that, and comes up now this community pride, that could make a lot of difference around, even the airport, like I said, everywhere around town. I mean, the number of people, we have our parks department, I think, James and, they do a great job, I pass them, and they not stand around looking at each other, always mowing, weed eating, or on a tractor or something. So they work long hours and try to take care of the city, but we could use a little bit of help. Passed the other day, and the lady, I don't know what her name is, is out watering flowers and pulling weeds.
Yeah, yeah.
Stuff like that, watering, watering everything, looks really great, but that's some of the pride you're talking about.
Is that something we could hire through, you know, through one of the staffing companies here in town? I mean, if we've got the dough to do it, it seems like that takes care of the insurance and some of the other things that are problems typically with seasonal employees. So that may be something worth pursuing in the short term, but I agree with that.
Did the wire give a presentation when the pool's opening? Is it going to be open July 4th this year?
I don't know the answer to the July 4th question, Commissioner. I know we're opening up for the holiday. We will be open on Memorial Day for the first day of the season this year. They've had a little bit of trouble getting the lifeguards up and running, but we will be open Memorial Day. Had hoped we'd be open a little bit earlier, but I will get an answer to you as to whether or not we will be open on the 4th of July.
What about how many people used the pool last year on a monthly, daily, weekly basis? Do we keep track of this?
We do, we do. I'll get that to you.
We got that report.
I think it's.
October, man.
I missed it.
Wait, but Times and Sonic donated hot dogs and hamburgers, we cried, dad.
We did. We did.
Sure did.
I'm too tired. Two years old.
The Thunder game starts in 15 minutes.
I know, anything else.
Twenty minutes. It actually lasts over there for the full quarter.
But that speaks to the heart of the problem when they start. If you got a thunder rep, you have to put toothpicks in your.
All right, is that it? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Sims?
Second.
By Commissioner Harrod. Call roll, please.
Sims? With Smith, oh, Harrod, okay.
I gave it to Harrod, sorry.
Okay, I gave it to Smith.
Okay, it's all right.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll open up the meeting for the Shawnee Municipal Authority, May 21st, 2012. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, consider bids.
Is that water line in the street, or is it in the alley, or on the property, or?
On the property, in the street right away.
Really? Lakeview Estates Water Line Replacement is in the street and in the property?
Well, yeah, starting at Central Street, but primarily, this is, this is an old line that's been in there since the 70s when this neighborhood was developed. It's really been a problem for us. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge for the homeowners out there when we get in the driveway and the front yards and the fall there, just now.
Okay.
What the what?
Okay, we went out for bids for Lakeview Estates Water Line Replacement. Probably long overdue, but anyway, we received four bids. The first one, Matthews Trenching Company, Inc. out of Oklahoma City, $285,497.50. The second one, Jordan Contractors, Inc. out of Tecumseh, $257,875. The third one, Wee Construction Company, that's W.E.E., out of Washington, Oklahoma, Last, but not least, Davenport Construction out of Edmond, Oklahoma, $259,365.
What kind of pipe are we, do we advertise for? Is that PVC or is it?
I'm trying to remember, Commissioner.
I don't think that's in.
Think it was Dr. R. Believe. Staff would recommend that we defer until the next meeting, give us a chance to go over the bids.
I'd like to have that information, I mean, if we're, what, you know, what we're talking about first.
I can get it to you.
Okay.
Is this for the whole neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Good.
Yep. All right, to have a motion to approve staff's recommendation, is that what you're trying to say? By Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 2B, sale and removal of fishing wharf and walkways, the enclosed fishing dock on Shawnee Twin Lake Number One. What?
No tapers.
Well, you know, we've had such good luck with selling the boat docks, I thought, well, we'll just give it a try on the fishing wharf, and I guess nobody really wanted it to tear it apart and take it to the salvage yard or whatever. So what we're going to propose to do is, after the budget year, is put it out to bid to see what the cost would be to have it removed if it's still in the budget.
But does it hurt to re-advertise it?
No, it doesn't hurt to re-advertise.
Surely that we could stimulate a taker to know when there's, the price might be right.
Now, the boat dock, yes. Both boat docks that, that we had out there we needed to get rid of, we did sell. But.
Let's give it another roll and see if there's not a, advertise it one more time, see if there's not a taker, it's going to be expensive for us to move.
Yep.
Is it, it's mainly aluminum, isn't it?
Uh, no, it's tin. It's tin with concrete bed, steel truss.
Okay. All right. Item number three, new business.
Madam Mayor, we have no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Moved to approve, uh, moved to adjourn, what?
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Sims. Do I have a second? Do I have a second to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll open up the meeting for the Shawnee Airport Authority, May 21st, 2012. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda, of which it says, "A minutes," and I don't have any minutes attached. To approve.
I wouldn't have made my decision.
Mine is just, it has the page, but it doesn't have the minutes.
I don't have any minutes either. I'll get the minutes, and we'll get them approved at the next meeting, is that what you want to do?
Okay. Okay, so.
Defer until the next meeting.
There's no business.
Okay. Item number two would be new business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Okay. Item number four, moved to adjourn by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned.
You don't have to hurry to the game, you only need to watch the last two minutes.